This is the power side. Alright, he's ready. Alright, I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board of Trustees meeting to order on March 6th at 6:31 PM according to my watch. We are holding this as a hybrid meeting, meaning that we are in the village hall as well as on Zoom. And the Zoom link is at the top of the agenda. There's also an audio call-in number there as well for those who choose to do this, do so. With that, we have a quorum. The agenda was properly posted, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next then, we have public appearances. So if anyone would like to speak from the public, we just ask that you share your name, your address, municipality, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes. So with that, I do have a submittal through our website that was, this person wished to have her comment read aloud. It was from Susan Brahm from 108 Marion Lane, and the subject for the agenda item was library. And the comment she would like read aloud was, "I grew up in a small town in north central Wisconsin, Rib Lake, population nine sixteen in 2021. Our library was, had a history in the making dating back to the 1900s. We frequented our town library for books, Saturdays, Storytime, Clubs, Meetings, Arts and Crafts, Activities, Bike Sales, you name it. It was the hub." And then she just said, she just wanted that read aloud and recorded it into the minutes. Anyone else on the Zoom or in the room would you like to make a public comment? Alright, then we'll move right to discuss and consider our meeting minutes from our village board meeting held on February 20th. Any questions, comments, or consideration for motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
David, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Then, to mix things up a little bit, to keep everybody on their toes, if the board is okay, I'd like to move the new business swearing-in of Officer Daniel Shepherd to, right before the presentation of the school board. That way, the officers can get back on the street for us. He said it, not me. Anybody okay with that? Alright, Chief?
Good evening, Officer Shepherd. If you please step up there. So I present in front of you Officer Daniel Shepherd. He comes to us through traveling throughout the United States and a few military deployments. So his background, he was born out in Fort Sam Houston, Texas. He's lived in several states in his lifetime. He spent, after graduating high school in Indiana, he joined the military. He was a member of the US Army. He was a military police officer for nine years, several deployments, and had to help the rank of Staff Sergeant on his discharge. He has family that's in Indiana, his mom, his dad, his sister, his two children. He also comes to the fair state of Wisconsin, thanks to his girlfriend. He's also in the military and is on deployment up here for us. So, why, I'd like to thank them both for their service to the country. And with that, would you, Officer Shepherd, ask to report the greeting itself, please?
So if you would repeat after me, I, Daniel Shepherd.
Aye, Daniel Shepherd.
Who has been appointed
Been appointed.
To the office of full-time police officer.
To the office of full-time police officer.
With the Village of Cottage Grove.
With the Village of Cottage Grove.
Swear that I will enforce the state laws and ordinances of the village.
Swear that I will enforce the state laws and ordinances of the village.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Wisconsin.
And the state of Wisconsin.
And I agree to faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
I agree to faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
I think they're gonna try to capture a few pictures. Do you want to embarrass them a little bit or no?
Do you like two photos?
We're a great community for hugs.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Alright, with that, then we'll jump back to presentations to board. In this case, Manano Grove School Board Referendum. Dan, you're here, so come and join us. Just make sure that the mic is turned on. Oh, still probably.
You have to turn, no, I don't think it's on. You'll have to...
Pull the little switch toward you.
Okay, good. Okay, well, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to spend some time with you tonight. I'm not going to do a formal presentation. There, all the information about the upcoming referendums on our website. We actually are doing a couple of community presentations as well. We did one at Cottage Grove School last week that was recorded and is available on our website as well. So, my purpose of being here tonight is just to kind of talk at a high level some of the key components of this referendum with regard to why now, you know, and what our budget situation is. And of course, you all, as elected officials, very cognizant of the impact, right, on our taxpayers and how that, you know, takes effect as well. So, I'll just go through a few highlights, if that's okay, and then be glad to answer any questions that you might have. Alright, so, really, the big question, why now? There are really three key factors. One, of course, is the rapidly increasing cost to maintain our operations that we're all experiencing, you know, through inflation. But more importantly, as far as the funding, that is impacting us. So, we have been relying very heavily on federal COVID relief funds over the past two years. Those were fixed funds that are one-time funds that are going to be away after this year. And then, most importantly, is our state funding, which has been stagnant over the past two years. So, forty-two percent of our annual revenue comes from the state. And so, any adjustments that they make for our revenues, of course, have a significant impact. And the past two years, our per pupil revenue has been frozen, okay? No increase at all. Now, it's understandable, the justification for our legislature to do that was that all school districts received significant federal funds. And the rationale was that we had enough federal funds to cover that gap. But the reality is, we didn't. The way the federal funds are distributed is based upon a formula that largely takes into account poverty in school districts, and because we are a low-poverty district, the amount of funding that we receive per pupil was far less than many other school districts. And so, it did help us fill that budget gap to a great extent these last two years. We still are operating under the current fiscal year of about $850,000 deficit, where we're dipping into our fund balance. But the other thing that's disappointing is those funds weren't meant to be used to balance budgets. They were meant to help districts serve students and recover, you know, from COVID. And so, some of those dollars were put to that. There were some strings attached with that, where we have been able to significantly add some staffing in buildings, specifically when we talk about student needs with regard to support and for mental health. We've added counselors and social workers, as well as special education teachers over the last couple of years. But again, those staffing, you know, costs don't go away, of course, once the federal funds go away. So, the big picture about, okay, what is happening now? So, the reality, what we're looking to do is just maintain existing programs. This is not asking for additional funding to expand anything. It's to maintain the operations that we have in place. We know the fixed costs, things like transportation, utilities, and then our debt service, you know, to pay for our buildings. Those things are in place. And, but, the real cost is our staff, right? Seventy percent of our costs are to staffing. That's what we do. We hire great teachers and support staff for our students, and that's what we really need the budget to support. And so, there, of course, is a tax impact when you're looking to ask for authority to, you know, increase revenue limits. But the reality is, we're looking to really make up for that last two years of no increase in state funding. So, there's a couple graphs that we have that show, but one, that if you look at what the impact will be on our taxpayers in entire district, and particularly in the Village of Cottage Grove, you'll see that our tax levy has decreased significantly over the last three years because of this. And so, I'm a village, I'm a homeowner in the Village of Cottage Grove. My personal school portion of the taxes decreased seventeen percent over the last three years. Of course, it's a little bit different for everyone, depending on their assessed value, but that is fairly typical. And that actually mirrors what our levy decrease has been, is seventeen percent decrease over the last three years. So, this increase would really make up for that reduction over the last three years. So, based on our projections, and of course, there's a lot of, you know, things that go into that, when this referendum would be fully funded in three years, the average taxpayer, as far as the school portion of the property tax, would still be paying less than they were three years ago in the school portion. So, yes, it is a tax increase for if we wouldn't do anything, but it really brings us back to that funding level where we're at in three years ago. So, again, all that information we have in charts and so on, and that's really the message, I think, that we want our voters to be informed about, about why we're asking for this at this time. You might recall that we just did an operational referendum two years ago. Our hope was, of course, was try to ride this out and wait for that to expire, and we just couldn't. There wasn't enough funding there to do that. So, that makes communication a little bit challenging as well, that, you know, we just went, you know, two years ago. But, so why don't I pause there, and if there's anything at all that you'd like me to go into more detail or any questions I can answer, I'd be glad to.
I do have a quick question. I don't have a child in the school district anymore, so I haven't paid as close of attention. But what are the services that might need to be cut if the referendum weren't to pass?
So, the first year of the referendum is looking, asking for an increase of $6 million to the levy. And so, just to put that perspective, our overall operating budget is about $50 million, okay? So, we would need to reduce by $6 million to have a balanced budget. And so, to reduce $6 million is a lot of staffing positions. And, you know, to put that perspective, our average compensation for a teacher, if you combine salary and benefits together, is about $80,000. And so, you take $6 million divided by that, that's about seventy-five teaching positions. Now, there is no way we would reduce seventy-five teaching positions. That'd be catastrophic, you know, for our staff. But there certainly would be some teaching positions, so we'd have to look at across the board. You know, certainly looking at increasing class size, some of the support positions would have to go away. And then, of course, the non-instructional staff as well. I mean, everything we would have to look at. But really, staffing is the place that we'd have to go to make those kind of reductions.
Dan, thank you for coming tonight. I do have a question, and I've gotten this one a lot, is around the, it's recurring, right? And can you, and again, I've been paying a lot of attention to this, right, in a lot of ways. Can you, can you give some comment around kind of the reasoning behind the in perpetuity?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm glad you asked that. That is a really important question, and something that our school board really spent a lot of time deliberating about before making that decision to ask for recurring. So, revenue limits have been in place in Wisconsin since 1993. And probably over the first decade, very few districts went to referendum because we were getting basically cost of living increases per pupil, and people in districts were able to make that work. It really started in about 2008 with the recession, where the state funding was reduced, and where a lot of districts then started going to referendum to make up, you know, for those funds. And so, most districts, like us, would do a non-recurring for a set period of time, ask for additional funding for the next, you know, say, four years, with the idea, let's reassess at that point what the state funding is, and whether you need to renew for the same amount or a different amount. And we did that twice. Our first one was in 2016 for four years, and then we did again in 2020 for another four years. And that really was going to be kind of the plan of the board, is every four years, and timing it up with the presidential elections, let's see where we're at and make an adjustment at that time. But part of that was as well, a hope that there might be a change in the state funding formula, that at some point, some things might get better, and that that wouldn't need to go on, or maybe not for the same dollar amount. The reason that the board decided on recurring at this point is, it really creates kind of a reset. So, again, the funding is to make up for that loss of funding these last two years. And the thought was, at this point, there's no indication that anything's going to change in the legislature. You know, you know, the governor proposed a pretty significant increase in school funding. To be honest, even if that amount went through, that wouldn't make up for the loss that we had entirely over the last two years. And we also know politically, there's just no way that's what the final number will be. And, and so, our board felt at this point that, had enough confidence that there was not going to be new money coming from the state, you know, two years down the road, that let's just do a reset, and here's our new revenue limit moving forward, you know, at that point.
I think as a follow-on to that, I think, I think there's a lot of concerns, right? I mean, when they hear recurring, right, people tend to get a little concerned, right? So, so how should we respond to people who have those concerns, right? I think there's, there's been a lot of comments in a lot of different forums around that. And so, you know, if, you know, I think we understand what that means, right? But for the, for the general layperson, how do you, how do you respond to somebody that says recurring means in perpetuity forever? You get to have, you know, like, have your way with this, right? So, like, how am I supposed to respond to that?
Yeah. So, I think part of it is, and it sounds like it's a significant increase, and the reality is, it's really what we've been living with all these years of revenue limits. So, for example, in 1993, that first year, all school districts received $200 per pupil increase. And that was essentially a cost of living increase. So, that became the new base. That, in a sense, was recurring. There is your new base moving forward. The next year, you got another per pupil increase. So, the way the current system works, it always is recurring. Once you get your new per pupil amount, that is your new base moving forward. And so, you know, the other thing is that it's a little bit arbitrary. The numbers that we, that districts are given per pupil really are based upon what you were spending in 1993, when they put the limits in place. And that's what your per pupil, your per pupil, that's your base now. And so, really, as much as it sounds like this is new money, it isn't. It just resets the base the way the current formula works.
Thanks, Dan. Dan, you mentioned debt and service for, I'm assuming for buildings, right?
Correct.
And so, we've had multiple referendums for buildings throughout the years. Can you explain to, you know, certainly the board, we probably have a good idea, but to whoever's listening, what you mean by that? Because, you know, as a voter, we voted in a referendum for such and such a school, fifty million, whatever it was. You assume that takes care of the debt for that school.
Yeah, nope. Great question. So, yeah, in our budget, really, and actually, when the board adopts a tax levy every year, technically, it does adopt three different levies. One for the operating part, one for the debt service that was through referendum, and another through debt service that was non-referendum. And so, the majority of our debt service is through referendum, as you mentioned. The most recent one was for $57 million. So typically, anytime that there's a building referendum, the board borrows that money, typically over a twenty-year period, and then, just like a mortgage, you're paying that back over that time. And so, currently, the two major things that we have debt for that we're still paying would be the Glacial Drummond School, which is now, I think we're in about year twelve, thirteen. And then, of course, Granite Ridge now is just, you know, two years old. The one thing, though, that, over time, when, with that debt, there, a lot of times, there are opportunities to refinance. And of course, we all know the interest rates were really low for a few years, and so, our board did a lot of refinancing. So, those debt schedules changed a little bit, so... But with that, I will say that the amount that we have actually is scheduled to decrease moving forward. So, as opposed to increases. That will actually help us.
Thanks, Dan. Other questions?
I had a question on Zoom.
Yes.
Thanks, John, and thank you, Dan, for joining us tonight. I just wanted to get, and we also get a lot of questions around the impact of the growth in Cottage Grove and how that factors into our operating expenses. So, you could maybe summarize a little bit of that?
Yeah, glad to. Another great question. And so, because our funding from the state is based on the per pupil, then enrollment is a really important number. And so, I think you're probably aware, at the time that Granite Ridge was being planned, of course, we did our growth studies, and we're expecting to see increased growth over time. And then COVID put a little bit of a hold on that. We are starting to see that resident growth. So, this school year alone, in fact, we've had thirty-seven new resident students who have enrolled in the district since the start of the school year. Our growth study, our plan was to build a support between fifty and a hundred new students per year. And so, it appears that that is more likely what's going to happen in the short term. And that's really a good thing for the district. We now have space because of the building, and so, as those new students come, that debt service doesn't change. So, our cost to educate those kids is actually less, you know, on a per pupil basis. The only thing about with the, the state funding is, is based upon a three-year average of your enrollment. So, as you get new growth, it kind of takes three years to fully realize that full enrollment to get that support. But we're definitely on a positive trend. The other question that goes along with that is open enrollment. And there's a bit, a lot of misconception about open enrollment. Open enrollment is a large revenue source for us. Again, if you have space, actually, you're required to take open enrollment, students, but as long as you have space, you're not paying additional for the debt. All you're doing is paying for the teacher. And so, again, the funding that we receive per pupil actually exceeds the actual cost to educate that child. We're fortunate because we have a lot of parents who apply for open enrollment, and we're able to then, you know, really, you know, level out our class sizes. And so, we, you know, not everyone gets in. We usually get about three hundred applications per year, and we accept about a hundred twenty. And really, it's just to get our class size to our board goal and never exceed that. And so, that's been a positive thing as well.
Thank you.
Dan, I have one more question for you. Can you dispel the myth or validate the rumor that multifamily housing developments bring more students?
Yeah, so, and you're obviously well aware of, with your planning, right, as you've approved those projects. I've also reached out to developers to try to get an idea about how many students we might have in those units. And the reality is, there's not a lot, you know, so... And, and we absolutely, based on our enrollment, what I just talked about, we can more than accommodate the students in there, be part of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dan? Alright. Thanks, Dan. Appreciate you coming up.
Yeah, I really appreciate your time as well. Please don't hesitate to reach out to myself or any of our board members, any other questions come up.
Alright, then we will move to new business item B, discuss and consider host permit for New Tech Print Painting LLC.
This was, last year was the first time that New Tech hosted food trucks in their parking lot just down the way, and they would like to do it again this year. So, that's what it's about.
Questions?
No, no questions. I'll make the motion to approve the host permit as applied for by New Tech Painting LLC.
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, David. Any further discussion?
Lisa, could he, could he have put more content on his app? Could he have put, like, it's really, really long, and there's lots of detail in here?
I can, I can convey that to Dave.
Any other discussion? Alright, having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we have discuss and consider a letter of support for the shared revenue increase.
I don't really have much to add besides what's in the memo, but, I mean, I think we all know the shared revenue formula is a bit busted. Cottage Grove has grown a lot, and we haven't seen that reflected in what we're getting. But we got a proposal in the budget to get some more money, which will help a lot, especially as far as maybe, you know, recruitment and retention of employees. So, I just thought it would be a good idea to let our elected legislators know that we, as a board, support the additional money for the village.
Any questions, comments?
I just wanted to add, thanks, Chris, for preparing this. A lot of times, they only hear from us when we have, you know, something bad to say, and that we want to support something. I think it's important to voice that also. So, thanks, Chris.
I'll make a motion that we approve to send the letter of support for shared revenue increase to our elected officials as drafted in the agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Then we move right down to reports from village boards, commissions, and committees. First up, joint fire. David or Vince?
Pulling it up here. We met on Monday, February 27th at Town Hall. Approve the minutes. Chief gave his report. It's interesting, we did get a breakdown that was kind of a little bit of a difference. This time, he gave us some breakdown of calls. We continue to see that, in the village, the largest share of calls are actually false alarms or false calls. I did ask if there's, you know, ultimately, is there anything that we can do about that? And again, the false calls and false alarms, they break down to further ten codes, so, or seven codes. They break down, they have further codes that they use from there. So, ultimately, it's not one single offender. It's just, you know, when, when you're only dealing with so many calls, which in this case was seventeen calls as of that date, six of them, it's, it's not statistically relevant, right? So, it's, there's just not much we can do about that. So, it was a good conversation then. We were going to discuss replacement of the heaters in the Fishbowl area. It's at GLAT through, it's like, basically, they call it the Fishbowl. But if you drive past the emergency service building, it's that little glass alcove out front. They call it the Fishbowl. Ultimately, they were able to get the heaters working, so we didn't have to replace those. We then did a discuss and consider to replace the wireless access points in the emergency services building. It gave Vince and I a chance to geek out and be IT guys for about thirty seconds. We ultimately did approve that. We then discussed the length of service award program for volunteer firefighters. Ultimately, the membership, the fire department's going to take it back to their membership and discuss, is there any interest in that? So, there's, they had some questions for us, and ultimately, they did connect with, through email after the call. They did, after the meeting, they did talk to village staff. And so, we're kind of waiting to get some facts and figures back as to whether or not there'd be interest. And would it be, I think the big question was, would it be date forward, or would we, would we cover all the memberships? So, there, and again, everything's up for conversation, right? So, ultimately, Rick was going to go back and do the math and figure out what would that be if we were going to do... Because we know date forward, but if we were going to cover everybody to date that's still on the, on the fire department, what would that cost us? So, more to come there. We then talked about the town... I think we were waiting.
I think, I think they were going to send it back to the town.
That's right. They were going to send it back for discussion. Thank you, Vince. And then we discussed the consolidated joint fire agreement. We're, we're this close. We're this close. The only hangup was the, the language between about a committee versus a commission. State statute dictates that we, we have to call it a commission. The town members were a little uncomfortable with that because they felt that if, if we were a commission, does that mean that we have to act like a police commission? I didn't know, and neither did Chris or Vince, so we went back. I did email back with the brick, and he's like, no, police commissions are very, very different from fire commissions. So the language isn't all that important. And what was kind of interesting is that Assistant Chief April is actually, she's, for her day job, is the enforcement of that. So we had the person most knowledgeable in the room was like, no, it's okay. But we were like, okay, we'll, we'll check with the lawyers, and come to find out she was right. So we probably should have just listened to her in that moment. But live and learn here. So hopefully, at the next meeting next month, we'll approve the contract. And then we set an, uh, next meeting date, and then we adjourned. Any questions?
Thanks, David. Next, then, we had, we have a law enforcement committee, so I'll take a swing at this one. We met on February 28th, covered a number of new business items, went through, just a, Chief just wanted to check on the way that the activity is presented, and so we, you know, got feedback from the committee regarding that, and basically, we're all good with that, with the, looking also towards maybe perhaps having an executive summary. Chief also mentioned that the swearing-in of Officer Shepherd, which we held earlier this evening, occurred, covered the, mentioned the implementation of the fourth flock camera, which is the license plate reader. So that's being installed soon or will be?
Will be.
Yeah, yeah. And just, it's just building on the success of the other three that we have in our community. So the program's going quite well. Basically, it notifies the officers when someone of interest with a license plate comes into the village, so they can go respond right away and take care of that if they're still in the village. Went through and had a bit of a conversation about the body worn camera program. Chief's digging into at least one other option versus our current one. So the committee was fine, continue that work. So some, a bit more work on the IT piece of potentially a different provider. Then walked through the annual review of the use of force. Fortunately, we didn't have too many, and again, looked like they were all certainly fine. Obviously, Chief indicated that we're always trying to strive for zero, but there were only a handful of situations that couldn't, couldn't be helped. Went through the internal affairs, citizen claims. We only had one citizen claim still actually active. The other internal affair items, vast majority were tied to a person that's no longer with the agency, so the others were dealt with a couple. And then we talked a little about mutual aid data, and Chief and Lieutenant are going to dig into a little bit more on that for the committee. Then covered the rest of the activity there. The detective, the school resource officer, and K-9 are all very busy, which is great, doing good things, and that was it, I think. I miss anything, Chief?
No.
Sarah, Chris? Okay. All right, then we have ad hoc architectural review committee. We met on March 1st. This was to look at the revised site plan amendment for One Community Bank. The review committee just had a minor request to add to the conditions around kind of, kind of hiding the condensers and stuff, stuff. Other than that, motions and recommended to be approved by the plan. And then I'll move right into plant commission. So plant commission, we met on the 2nd of March, and the main piece there, which actually, this is a ad hoc plant commission, we're going to meet again this week, was to cover the One Community Bank Site Plan Amendment. So with that, I know we have a few folks here from One Community Bank. You guys want to come up and, some of, some of the folks in the board haven't heard, heard the adjustments.
Corey here. I'm going to move forward.
Make sure that, yep, thanks, Brian.
So we enjoyed being with the ARC and the plant commission last week and to discuss material changes to our plans for the bank building here in Cottage Grove, and some modest design changes that really mostly relate to the drive-up experience. With that, I'll turn it over to Ryan Frank from OPN Architects to kind of walk you through what, what we discussed.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. So, yeah, we just wanted to make sure we were clear on the updates that we were making to the building, so that was, what was it expected when the building's complete? And so what we did to make some changes to the project, as Jeff mentioned specifically to the drive-up lane, and those were related to some concerns for kind of safety and usability of that lane and how closed off it might be, as well as we had originally proposed our condensers to be screened kind of on the interior of that space, and there was some concern about the noise and how the transaction between the teller and the driver might work. And so we revised that area. Here in the floor plan, you can see it's this area right here on the, what would be the south side of the building. We had originally proposed kind of a screened batten system along there. That was to be kind of a, an accent and signage potentially on the building. But what we're looking to do here, I'll flip through, is we're actually looking to remove those battens and open that space up a lot more, and so that from the road and from the user experience as you approach, you are able to see in daylight, and safety and security will all be kind of maintained within that area so that, you know, nobody's hiding within that space, and also that noise is minimized there. So that's, that south elevation, the battens are removed, and it's fully open now along that elevation. We've also made just a general material change to the building. We had originally communicated that we were exploring terracotta as an option or stone, and we just wanted to communicate that we've proceeded with going with a stone option. And so it's going to be a full-depth stone, and it's going to be a large format, so it'll be about eight inches high and 36 inches wide, and so these will be stacked in place. They'll give a similar aesthetic to what we had presented previously, but they'll actually have a little bit more warmth and character to the material than the terracotta is a very clean and kind of monolithic material, and very contemporary and pleasing because it is still a natural material. But the stone, we feel, is going to be more complementary to, to the park and the other businesses in the area, so that you can kind of see that stone represented here as well. I'll flip to just a couple perspectives of the buildings that you can see. Here is the night drive, kind of looking from highway end. You can see now that you're now seeing into the, the drive lane, you're seeing the cars, and you're seeing into the building, so that's much more illuminated and not necessarily screened off. And then again, kind of the daytime shots. These all depict the updated kind of stone format material, which hopefully you wouldn't notice that there was a change necessarily to that, but we're just communicating that we are proceeding with stone as the panels. And here, again, identifying that that's a really kind of open space. What was communicated, as John mentioned, for screening the condenser is we've moved the condensers outside of the, the drive lane, and we're planning to conceal those with landscaping elements, but we'll be looking to add in some additional actual material screening to that that will complement the building, likely in the metal panel. As it relates to the site, I'll flip to our site plan. The real major change to the site is regarding kind of the, the entry sidewalk from Landmark. And really, we're trying to just minimize some of our site impact and kind of following suit to Jimmy John's Culver, some of the other buildings that are out there, and removing that drive and sidewalk. And what was required because of that was an additional retaining wall because of the kind of limits to that entry drive adjacent to the well site, that we had to kind of include a retaining wall there. So we're trying to remove some of those site constraints and make that just an, an easy drive. We do maintain sidewalk connection to the bike path along the west, which we feel is the most important approach to the building anyways, and it directs you closer to the bike parking, closer to the entry of the building, which seems to make the most sense. So those are just the major changes that we wanted to just communicate and just open them to any questions you might have.
I don't know if Aaron's, um, yes, okay. Aaron had a few comments, but I'll turn it over to him if he's available.
Thank you, John. Yeah, probably the most visible change was the removal of the screen wall. I kind of like that, the ARC kind of like that, but we certainly understand the rationale for the change and support what the bank's looking to do here. We'd recommend approval with just a couple of conditions. The first one being, if they do decide to go back to any of the previously approved items, they're free to do that without coming back. Now, once again, doesn't sound like they will, if they're happy with what they're proposing now, but in case that occurs, they can do that. The second condition is no longer relevant, it related to submitting the stormwater maintenance agreement in the interim since the report was prepared. That's been done and recorded. The third condition was just a note from Strand. There's an ADA accessible curb ramp on the south side of the building that was originally there because it led to the sidewalk that went out the Landmark Drive. It may not be necessary anymore, so if the bank wants to, if you wrote about it, they could. There still is an ADA ramp on the other side closer to the ADA parking spaces. And then, as Ryan alluded to, the ARC and plant commission did add a condition related to screening the mechanical equipment with an actual solid wall matching the building as opposed to just landscaping. So when someone makes a motion, if you reference the village action report, that would include that extra condition. It's not in the staff report.
Thanks, Aaron. I guess my comment is, and I think I said this maybe at the plant or ERC, the, removing that, the batten system, you kind of get a symmetry in both sides of the building where you're entering versus a drive-through, so, you know, long-term, I think it's going to be a better look overall, plus obviously bringing more natural light, I think, which was the intent of getting it out of there. So from my perspective, I actually think it's better. Any questions, comments from board members?
I'm just curious whether condenser units are so far from the building.
Trying to pull them, because like most banks, there's no backside to the building because you're kind of, either there's, you know, a right-of-way or an entry, and so we really want to kind of conceal utilities towards the back of the building, and our kind of, what we're calling the more back of the building is this side of the drive-up lane. But what we also don't want to do is have those in the drive-up lane because of the noise concern, and so we're actually pulling them away from the building so they can be outside of kind of that limit under the kind of lid in that space and allow kind of the noise to transfer more to the exterior. And so that's the real intent, as well as just to kind of give this building a little bit more space, and by pulling those away, similar to like a transformer on the building site, it's kind of letting the building, you know, have a little bit more breathing room as far as the landscaping and what you would observe as a viewer of the building. So it's visually more appealing to look at the building facade without having, you know, large equipment right up against them.
So I'm, I'm going to ask a question, but I, I do not pretend to be an HVAC expert at all. Is it, will it, do the condensers have to work any harder, being that far, that much farther away from the?
They won't have to work any harder, but they'll have to have their condensing lines run further.
Okay.
So their, their condensing lines will have to be run underground into the building, in which they do typically, you know, but typically they sit adjacent to your building, and so they're going to only go a couple feet and be inside the building footprint. Whereas here, they're, because they're going to be 20 feet away, they'll be routed underground and into the building. So there are just the limits of what a condensing line can go, and so we just have to maintain that.
That's fair. Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application from One Community Bank for the site plan amendment for the 6,000 square foot bank at 1565 Landmark Drive with the condition as described by Aaron in the memo.
All right, thanks, Chris. Thanks, Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Anybody opposed? If we abstain, motion carries. Thanks, Ryan, and thanks, Jeff, for coming up.
Thanks, again. Thank you all.
All right. Then we move right to reports from village officers. I assume we have to stand for Rick and Larry today.
I was going to say, I don't have anything to report, but just a brief introduction. So I'm Derek Punches, I'm an attorney at Stafford Rosenbaum, and I work with both Rick and Larry, and I've worked with some people in this room on, on issues related to the village here, but I'm excited to do a little bit more, so.
Eric? You're starting off on the right foot, too. Next, then, we have finance director.
That guy that just likes to talk, apparently. Hopefully, these are going to be pretty quick tonight, but I want to make sure that I address any board members' concerns. The first two items relate to budget, proposed budget amendments. So the first one being 2022-01, the 150,000, eliminating the budgeted transfer over to the Capital Project Fund. Initially, when the, the budget was created in 20, for 2022, it was thought that, well, one, we didn't know we were going to be in the inflationary environment that we were in, and, and two, it was projected that the Capital Projects Fund would need some additional assistance, and, which would in turn reduce debt, you know, the debt required to support these projects. You know, and things, and things part to JJ, well, really both parts to JJ. There are public works, a vast majority of the public works projects came under budget, as well as we got a little bit of additional grant funding from the county that we weren't expecting. So for those two reasons, and for the reason that, you know, while I don't have 2022 numbers finalized, I, I hope to have those here in the next couple of weeks. I do anticipate a pretty significant decrease in unrestricted fund balance, and, and this would certainly help soften that blow. And, and why that is important is, that is a key indicator for SNPR bond issuer, when they're kind of looking at our unrestricted or kind of planned use of fund balance every year, they kind of want consistency. They want to be like, okay, well, you guys plan to be at this percentage, why, you know, why were you, you know, either, even if it is 3% or 4% difference, was it planned for? And then the second part of the 2022-01 budget amendment was just to memorialize a motion that had already been passed by, by the board, but we had formally put it in the terms of a true budget amendment. And again, with the dollar amounts we're talking about here, we, we should be approving an amendment to the 2022 budget. Any questions on this one in particular?
I'm confused. Like, are we, so we're not transferring funds, or are we are transferring funds?
So the original 2022 column you'll see is, you know, planned to, to give 150,000 to the Capital Project Fund. The amendment would be to eliminate that, so the 150,000 planned use of fund balance would stay in the general fund.
Oh, okay.
To soften the impact of.
Just making sure.
Impact. And, yeah, and unfortunately, you know, I know how we talked about unrealized gain or loss on investments. You know, that, unfortunately, that, that falls into the unrestricted fund balance category, so, you know, we're getting kind of hit on that as well as some inflationary factors for 2022 as well, even though that the unrealized gain or loss is a temporary, going to be a temporary thing based off of the market.
In other words, the market sucks right now, is what you're saying.
That's part of it.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 budget amendment, 2022-001.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Having heard none, then, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Keep going.
And all right, for our first budget amendment for 2023. So we did already approve the use of two different new items for ARPA spending. My plan both here is if we would plan to use ARPA funding and once a project is complete, we would come back amended to the balance. I'd give you an update on where we're at. And we could plan to use the funds for other, other reasons or other ways. So this would just memorialize the two, the, the spending for the 60,000 of election equipment. And then the stormwater grant of 9,500.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 budget amendment, 2023 dash zero zero one.
Second.
Sarah, thank you, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
Got two more, two more items.
Yep, keep going.
So the, the next, the next bullet, I kind of want the board to have some conversation as well as kind of gauge your guys' interest in this. The, the way this is termed is intra-fund budget amendments. Really, I'd like to bring to the board either the next meeting or the meeting after that, a, a policy that guides staff on how to handle budget amendments. From an intra-fund perspective, I've had some conversations with Matt on if either I would propose it and, and giving it to Matt to approve it as long as it wasn't changing spending in, in total. If we were just reallocating, something came up more expensive, we realized we had to cut something to, to be able to meet budget performance. You know, what, what is a threshold that the board would be comfortable us making it on a staff decision before we'd have to come to the board? Or if the board would just want us to come to, with, to the board for any budget amendments. I, I've seen communities do anywhere between 15 to 25,000. Before having to come to the board. And again, this would not be shifting funds between, you know, let's just say the capital fund or the general fund. This would be, for example, this came up, our, our. Our garbage is a lot higher than we anticipated to come across this year due to some fuel surcharges due to the price of diesel. So to compensate that, we're going to reduce our part-time staffing in the summer for public works. And kind of, we've already discussed this in, in staff to make that happen internally. But we're just asking for the formal budget policy if we would, if you'd like us to come to the board with all of those decisions? Or if there's a certain level that you'd be comfortable with staff taking care of internally?
How often you anticipate it occurring? I mean, we haven't really talked about much of this.
A lot, a lot less in when inflation cools down. I think there's some things that we're, we're learning we can either do better or worse. And, and as we're kind of figuring out how to spend things as efficiently as possible. I, I mean, I would, I would say maybe five times a year, five or six times a year. You know, when I get a good understanding of where our investments are at, as certain, our true investment income, money that we actually get from the bank. You know, if we get a, a contract back, that's a service contract back that's significantly cheaper, more expensive. It, it would have to be an event that would trigger it, not just, it, it would not really be a wage driven thing.
So if we were to set such a policy, would you anticipate something like in the quarterly financials to maybe highlight those?
Yeah, it would definitely be something that I, I would present. And, and if the board would like, I could even present that at the next staff meeting that, you know, this was discussed and, and staff made these recommendations.
Is there ever anything that comes up that's urgent, that can't wait till the next board meeting or?
Not that I can think, not that I can think of.
We're unlikely, if it's urgent, Chris, we're probably going to meet.
Yeah.
Either way.
I mean, I would, I would think that. To a degree, I feel like you're already doing this, like five, $10, right? You're not going to come to the board. So like, to me, this feels like there's already a de facto policy. It's just the dollar amounts because of inflation. Now, this is, this conversation amongst staff is happening more often than it ever did. So it's like, I'm, I'm with John, but at the same point, like, I just want to, like, my fear is that, okay, we wait till the quarterly result and then they're, like, it happened. Let's say we set the bar at 20 grand and it happened 15 times. Again, I'm just back of the napkin here, but like.
Certainly, like separated it out.
It's like, whoa, like, that's a lot more than I thought was going to happen, right? Like, so there's, to me, it's not necessarily the dollar amount. I'm more interested in the frequency, right? Because if it's like, whatever the dollar amount we set and it happens a dozen, 20, again, more than likely not going to happen, but it just, this is where my brain goes, is that 1% chance of like, oh, my God, this happened 30 times in the last quarter. Like, we should probably get involved. Again, we can always change our mind, like, we can always, like, change the policy, but I just, help me get over my 1%.
Yeah, and, and I think too, I, I have no problem coming to the board for $100 or $1,000. I think what we will see here or what you guys will see over the next years is a much tighter budget, budgeting process and budget management. And where I don't think budget amendments have been typical in the last couple of years at least. You know, identifying and really, you know, watching kind of not every dollar, but being very, very, very more, more consistent and more. You know, the tracking will be ramped up quite a bit. So, you know, really, if, if, if you're not comfortable with staff doing it, I can certainly come to the board and recommend, even at frequency from a quarter perspective, I can say, hey, here are the recommendations that I recommend for first quarter 2023. And, and this is why, I, we could certainly go that route as well. I just, I, I noticed that we don't have any budget amendment policies in place currently. And so I think the big thing is for me is getting one in place and kind of getting the board's age on what they want that to look like.
I think you draft it and then we'll have a good discussion about it, I think. Is that reasonable?
That sounds great. And like I said, 2022, that was my next thing that I'm going to discuss. I am very close to having, you know, with 99% accuracy on where our things are sitting at. I fully anticipate to kind of do a mini presentation with the board. We do have our audit here at the end of the month. So hoping that there'll be financial statements available for you to look at here shortly, too.
All right. Any questions? Move then on to communication. Listen, it's been as starting off with the consideration for vouchers. Any questions, comments there?
What's the Alabama Child Support Payment Center?
I had the same one. I wrote it down. I'm like, what is this? I've never seen it before, that's why it struck me.
Rick, this is employee related? This is something that you can?
Oh.
Are you asking me?
This is about a specific employee.
So what was the question? I'm sorry, Karen.
Uh, there's, there's a payment on the bills list to Alabama Family Services. My.
Alabama Child Support Payment.
In order to answer it, it's about a specific employee.
I think that, I think you can omit the name if you'd like.
Okay. It's, so we were given two letters in the mail from that agency. There's some delinquent child support that's out there that we have to remit by wheelie. So that will be, you, you should see one of those per meeting here coming up. And it's not anything that the village is, we're, we're actually holding out from the check and sending it off.
Okay. Understood. It just, I think it's same thing. It just threw me.
And it's at the top of the list, too. It's like, whoa, hello.
And the amount was, it wasn't particularly, it was more, I'd never seen something like that before.
Make a motion to approve the bills as written.
All right, thank you, David. Is there a second? Sarah, I think. Maybe, I don't know. She's closer to me, Chris.
Dealer's choice.
Yeah. Okay, Chris, it is then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next correspondence. I didn't have any, but anybody else? Upcoming community events. It's, you can see the big billboard out on at least Cottage Grove Road. There is a pasta dinner this Saturday at Flynn Hall for the Lion, Local Lions Club, 428, I believe. Are there others?
Fire department, corned beef dinner on the Saturday, the 18th.
Yes, I saw that, too. And that's your, I can't remember how many annual. Is it 10?
At least.
Yeah.
I'd have to look. I don't, they've been doing it a long time.
Any others? We're starting to crawl into spring or mud season, I like to call it.
Little by little.
So the, the, the events will continue to increase. People will get out. The cabin fee will be shook, shaken off, which will be good. Future agenda items?
Do we need to make the first April meeting virtual? Before the election?
Yes. Next time. Thank you, Chris.
So every year, we ask all of our service providers to come and present to the board. Associated appraisal, we've reached out and asked to give a presentation. And I know they have, they still haven't done it for last year. Would the board like us to press the issue and, and have them come out?
Which, which vendor again?
Associated appraisal. They're our assessor.
Please.
Okay. Issue pressed.
And they will be out soon because they've got stuff coming up for residents and board review.
John, not for the next meeting, but for the third. I don't want to tempt karma here, but I'm hoping that we will be able to approve the fire. Contract.
You probably shouldn't have said.
It happens. Will we need a close session for that?
I don't think so. Not at this point. I mean, it's all been covered.
You're right. I thought we did for you.
But this is, we're down to their approval, though, I think. I would defer to Derek, Rick, Larry.
Game day decision.
Yes.
We'll figure out when we get closer.
If you need to deliberate, you can certainly go into a close session.
Okay.
You'll make a decision out of close.
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely.
Again, I'm tempting fate here.
No, I, I think, I think your optimism, I like it. I think it'll be what, 10 agreements down to one, I think, or something like that.
We, we are on the five yard line here.
That's awesome. A lot of great work done by the, the committee, too. Then we will move right down to item 11 then.
Make a motion to adjourn.
David, is there a second? Thank you, Chris. Not debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll get my hearing checked over here. Lisa heard it. Right.